I have first of a public hearing on our chicken law. So Kelly, would you read the legally required bit?
Oh wait, are we on the...
We're on that here. We're on, thank you.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of New Paltz on August 22nd, 2012 at 7:30 PM regarding the adoption of a local law of the Village of New Paltz for the year 2012, which will allow the keeping of chickens on residential lots. Any person is entitled to be heard upon said proposed local law, such public hearing. Copies of said proposed local law are available for review at New Paltz Village Hall, 25 Platico Avenue, New Paltz, New York, 12561. The Village of New Paltz will make every effort to assure that the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and/or reasonable accommodation should contact the village clerk, by order of the Village Board of the Village of New Paltz dated August 9th, 2012.
Thank you. Soon there's some folks here to speak to this law. Annie, you want to start?
Okay, well, you know, I've been here before and talked about these many reasons why I feel this law should be tabled until we know more about how it's birthing in other places where it has passed. There are a million reasons. One is that it's going to attract wildlife. I mean, you know, we've read this, I'm sure you've heard it many times, but wildlife will be attracted into residential areas. Not only will we have mice and rats attracted to the grain, but we're going to have raccoons and coyotes and hawks and various other predators of, you know, chickens. So that's going to require chickens, you know, as roofing on top of whatever chicken wire you have around. It really does not belong in a residential area. There's also cruelty. Are the people who have the chickens going to be giving them veterinary care when they get sick? I mean, it doesn't make a lot of economic sense of economics, it's one of the reasons for having chickens. And the other thing is it's allowing slaughter. Now, your law says nothing about where this slaughter is supposed to take place, but obviously you're not going to consume live chickens. So slaughter is going to have to be part of the law, which I don't believe it's been addressed here at all.
It hasn't.
Okay. So where is the slaughter then supposed to take place?
It just says that there's, you're not allowed to slaughter the chickens. It doesn't dictate where.
Not allowed to slaughter chickens, but how do they consume the chickens?
You would bring it to a slaughter or somebody who knows how to humanely do it?
You know, I think we're talking about many things. So the fact that the chickens can't be slaughtered here doesn't eliminate the odor, it doesn't eliminate the noise factor, it doesn't eliminate the fact that there will be roosters involved as well. I know you're not allowing roosters, but roosters come with the chickens, with the hens, they do. They're used as packing material around the little chicks. They also are misssexed, they don't know how to properly sex the chickens, and so they end up in the mix. I get a lot of wildlife calls, I was just called by somebody who said he had to get rid of his roosters. The, I said, "Well, you know, how'd you get the roosters?" He said, "Well, they came with the hens." So there are so many people in this town or village who don't even know about this law. We were outside, you know, from the post office, and we were letting people know about the public hearing, and they said, "What law?" And, "Oh my God, no, they're not going to be doing this, are they?" So, you know, I think you really need to definitely not take a vote tonight on it. Give people a chance to get here and communicate with you. We had people who tried to email you, and their email was bouncing.
I forwarded everyone I got to the vote.
You...
Yeah, there's a problem with the village email.
There was a...
I got them, and I, everything that I was sent, that I saw was also copied to the broken email addresses, I made sure to send to the trustees, so they did get the emails.
Okay. But I don't know that you got them all. I mean, if you're having a problem with the server, you might not have.
It's entirely possible. And we're in the process of replacing that server, so hopefully it's a temporary problem.
Well, I hope so. But, you know, I mean, just, there is a, really, I mean, we could, I could go on and on about cruelty issues, the, you know, the sanitation, the inspection aspect. I mean, I was talking to, I don't want to get anyone into trouble, but everyone's saying, "Now we're supposed to inspect chicken coops?" I mean, really, it's getting absurd. So I guess my time is up, right?
Thank you.
You know, I, can I speak later after I hear what someone else has to say?
Depends on how repetitive the conversation gets and how long we can have. Yes?
Hi, my name is Rachel, I'm a student in New Paltz. I just want to address a few issues. Being a student, also someone who works retail in the area, I'm exposed to people who live in the area and also other students, and I know for a fact it's a very transient area, there's people who have vacation homes, there's students who are not in permanent residence. I've seen abandoned pets on the side of the road, so I don't know necessarily if it's just going to be students getting their hands on this, but if it's so readily accessible, I don't see why students wouldn't be getting their hands in this. And not just students, people who have vacation homes that might want to get chickens for their vacation home. I don't want to see the animals abandoned. If the animals do become abandoned, then the town's going to become overrun with chickens. And I also know that I love this town, I love the environment here, and I wouldn't want to walk down the street and smell chicken urine and chicken poop, that's kind of nasty, and I think it would ruin the town as well. So that, that's an issue that I would like to address.
Mark, over here. Please, Mark.
My name is Tova Weisbaum, I live in the town, but this issue is close to my heart. I want to support the ability for taking the initiative, and I hope the town will follow suit. You are really stepping up with the times, it's not fair, it's a movement. Maybe it's a movement in this part of the world, but it has been going on the rest of the world for a long time. I want to respond to some issues that you raised right now. Sanitation, look, for wildlife, wildlife is here, I live very close to the border. The hawks are here, the foxes are here, different reasons, colonizing wildlife, man is one thing, bird feeders is another one. I know that for you who goes to overnight, bird feeder is low pay, a couple of wet cans and wet fenced chickens are low pay. Chickens, people who want to raise chickens are doing it for food, they want the eggs, they want food, they want the closest access to food, control of the food. Yes, we have local farmers who do eggs and raise meat, and those who can afford it, we support them and buy their products. Not everybody can afford $5 a month for a dozen eggs. So economics, yes, it does play into the picture. Now, the main issue, and I have it in an apple to let us to the end, is arguments on the side of animals, not animals and cruelty. I think, I think some people are going in the wrong direction. If any practice is cruel in humane and anti-animal rights, it's agricultural, industrial, farming. What's happening there is unimaginable. People, many people eat meat, many more eat eggs. Those who prefer to stay vegan, vegetarian, fine, but most people consume meat and consume eggs. I think the life of the chicken, the few hens, the roosters, that would be wet vacant yard, in the backyard, with food being tended properly, problems are coming to the bird feeders. Dog urination feces are much more heavily produced by pests walking around. Chicken coop can be used for compost and for garden. So, on the subject of cruelty of animals, those who want to raise a few hens are doing service to animals, and if those animals get any chicken poop, chicken soup, or just for these eggs, their life is at fault, the quality of life is at fault, than those that have been caught for soup. These are just some points.
Thank you, Mark. We're going to actually wait for the ordinance to begin, and then we'll see. Yes, please.
My name is Yogi Amatodak, I live here in the village, and I'm here to strongly oppose the chicken law. I believe very strongly that we have so many other different issues that need to be tackled here as far as noise pollution, better access for disability, for people with disability, poor conditions of sidewalks and things, and here we are, you know, dealing with a chicken law. We do have local eggs available, we are already having a lot of wildlife already in this area. We have deer, we have skunks, we have opossums. I live up right just a block from the middle school. We have mice already, and I think most of our village lots, it's a residential area, I think it's very inappropriate. If the lady here that's in the town of New Paltz has more land available, that's fine, but we are all in very, very close proximity to one another, and I just don't think it's an appropriate situation for the village to even to consider. So I'm strongly opposed to it.
Thank you. Vicki?
Thank you. As a three-year-old, I was in a delightful situation because the little town we lived in had sort of surrounded the remnants of a farm. So I could go there and feed the horses and play with the chickens, and badger my family about, "Why couldn't we let the pet hen in the house the way those folks let the pet hen in the house?" It was a wonderful, a wonderful open door policy that family had. But now, as a homeowner and sympathetic asshole, I understand that zoning is a good thing, and we should be very careful what we do in our residential neighborhoods. I don't know if you folks have an idea of the impact if you limit this to half-acre lots. I don't know if any half-acre lots there are in the village that would be interested in this, but every half-acre lot owner or tenant who is interested in this will affect neighbors on either side, certainly the neighbor immediately in the rear, and at least the neighbors of the person immediately in the rear potentially could be affected by one coop. So I think you need to look at how appropriate it is, how much this law could be taken advantage of in terms of getting and keep, getting a chicken license and keeping it long-term. I strongly recommend that if you decide to pass this, you change it so that they're not allowed in side yards, only in the rear. I strongly advise that your proposed fine be doubled. Fines in the town and village are way too low for all enforcement items. And it seems to me, as it seems to some other people here, that there's more than enough instances where local laws go unenforced, and let's really not add another. I think this is not an appropriate idea, and I agree with wildlife watch, I appreciate the information that they distributed, and I do support that position of mine.
Thank you, Vicki. Ian?
Yes, I'd like to point out something very practical. If you're going to permit six chickens to be in every half-acre or acre plot, since half-acre now, quarter acre, let's say roughly, I don't know the exact number, but my guess would be that there are at least 100, 250 half-acre lots in the village.
Just over 120.
Okay, that's great.
Close.
Okay, so six times 120 is about 720 chickens. You're permitting 720 chickens to be released in this area. That's a major impact.
Let me stop you there, so that, before the point sinks in, because I was going to mention this afterward when we speak, but because you brought it up, I actually did look out of personal curiosity. Of those 126, from my count, there are 77 parcels in the village, there are 1,296. Roughly 5, 5.9%, if my math is right, although in the ballpark of 5 to 6% of the parcels would be residential, because not all half-acre parcels would apply if you don't, if there's not someone living there. Like the car wash, you're not going to have a chicken.
Okay, you have to be in the under three percent, I guess.
No, but just, you know, apartment complexes, they don't allow gardens alone chickens, the commercial-only buildings, why would they put it there? So I went through the plausible ones, a half-acre or more that are residential, could be 77 parcels.
So you're going to release about 500, you're going to permit releasing 500 chickens in this area? And as we all know, chickens will have effects on the environment, there'll be predators attracted to them, there'll be rats and mice attracted to them. It's an impact on the environment. Before you pass it, at some point you'll have to consider CTRA. You can say in the recent fine, permitting to release 500 chickens in this area has no impact on the environment. It's a significant impact on the environment, and you will need it for the IRS.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I just have some notes. I've had relatives who've had chickens, who've had five acres. They built great houses, raccoons got into the houses, coyotes got into the houses, and then chickens were slaughtered. So it seems that no matter what kind of housing you put up, they will get in. Also, even though chickens are contained, they can fly over a fence, which presents, you know, a possible hazard, you know, in a road. So now, you know, in addition to all the traffic we have through town, now we're going to have chickens crossing the road. So, you know, it's a potential hazard. Also, I'm sure that there will be a lot of fighting between neighbors, because chickens will uproot gardens. And as far as the cost of eggs being $5, does anybody know how much money it costs to feed chickens? It's a lot, it's like $15 a week. So for $15 a week, and it depends on how many chickens you have, for $15 a week, you can buy a lot of eggs, if that's your reason.
Thank you, Annie. Brian?
I want to thank the board for having a hearing, and Brian Obak for proposing this, which I think is a very good resolution. I want to speak in favor of it. I'm totally in favor of appropriate zoning, you know, restrictions for a community, and we have to respect one another, and that's what zoning restrictions are for. But when it comes to anything basically producing your own food, I believe that in a debate about banning or not banning, the onus is on the people that want to restrict our rights to prove to us that it's going to be a problem. And thus far, you know, from all that I've read and all that I've heard, you know, there's no sort of evidence-based claims demonstrating why this would be a problem. I hear a lot of sort of speculation about what if this happened or what if that happened, but nothing that is convincing enough to deny people their rights to raise chickens. Some of these have been mentioned, and I'll just sort of respond to a few of the main points that I've heard. Basically, four claims made against, the noise and the roosters. Roosters are not allowed. I don't know why roosters keep coming into this. If anybody has a rooster, presumably they won't be allowed to keep it, and there won't be roosters. Chickens themselves, I've been around chickens, and they don't make a lot of noise. In my, you know, at my house, you know, crickets and other birds and throughway noise, and from college students, make far more noise than any chicken ever would. So we're going to start banning things on that ground, we have a lot of banning to do. Pests and disease. If anything, chickens are likely to control pests. People have already said, "Hey, we have mice here, we have skunks here, we have raccoons here." I don't think chickens are going to result in some kind of influx of pests, and if anything, chickens eat, you know, eat ticks, which are the primary source of disease around here. But if we're really concerned about public health, we should stop getting chickens from factory farms and allow people to raise them themselves, because that's the real threat to our health and to the environment. The abandonment and negligence claim, you know, these are not dogs or cats, you know, these are, you know, productive animals, and if somebody wants to get rid of a valued, you know, source of food, there will be people to take them. I really don't think that that's a concern. And besides which, the ordinance provides for, you know, sound care and proper animal health injury. You know, abuse of animals should be handled like any abuse of animals. Somebody locks, you know, ties up their dog for a week in their backyard, you know, hopefully, you know, maybe we can report that and authorities would address the issue. No evidence, I have not seen real evidence other than sort of, you know, speculative claims about some predator invasion that will result if we have a few chickens. You know, the likelihood of every single person who can have chickens gets the maximum number of chickens and fills our community with chickens is high. I believe we're talking about a relatively small number of people who are going to be doing us a service by experimenting with other ways of providing food beyond the agricultural, the industrial agricultural system that was mentioned earlier. You know, I think that, and I've heard this explicitly from some critics, that the real source of opposition is, is opposition to using chickens at all. And I think that that's an admirable argument. You know, I don't eat chickens myself, I don't intend to raise chickens, but I think that the real debate that opponents would like to have is whether or not it's appropriate to eat chickens. But that's not the debate that we're having. You know, chickens raised in the backyard are going to be raised in much more humane conditions than they would be under conventional agricultural circumstances where, again, the real source of disease and ecological hazard lies. We should be encouraging this, we should be encouraging farming, we should be encouraging raising chickens, we should be encouraging home food production. And I think that your, the approach that you're taking, or at least the proposal, is very sound, well-reasoned, and rational. I think that the town of New Paltz has turned to the village for leadership. You know, they decided to hold off and let the village consider it. I think the ordinance you proposed is very sound and workable, and it addresses all the concerns that have been raised by opponents of this. So I hope that the village provides that leadership, passes this ordinance, that there are policies that are robust, and I'm confident that we as a community and you as a board can revisit it and address it. But I really encourage you to pass this.
Thank you. Pete in the back? I think it's Pete.
Yeah, two separate debates on chickens, yeah, that's New Paltz stuff. Am I allowed to talk about hens here and roosters over there? Is that how we're divided?
I don't know. I'm not going to repeat all the fun things that I've said. I know it's a close call, and it's a lot of difficult decisions in a, you know, a small place with a lot of small lots and a lot of animals around. I remember 15 years ago standing here talking about feral cats. There are still more than a couple here in town that people feed. It rises and falls as an issue and a problem, you know, and this one too, because I just want to say in the contingency with most of what Trevor said, almost all of what Brian said, and which of what he said. And I don't mean to disparage vegans or people who have, okay, animal rights, in some ultimate sense, we're all vegans, but, but, you know, if you go to the bistro or any of the diners around here, a lot of chickens, chickens and eggs. So, you know, I hope you can, I hope you can, you know, approve something and give special protections to the neighbors, because that's really the distance of doubt for people who live nearby who would be affected by it. If they have complaints, then let the people who have chickens go ahead and do that.
Anyone who hasn't spoken? Yes, sir. The best.
I just wanted to speak very briefly in favor of allowing chickens in the village. I want to thank the board, you guys are putting a lot of work into this, and spending a lot of time on this, and it's only going to affect a certain number of people, I understand that. But people who brought it forward, it might not be a priority for you, but for the people who want to raise chickens, it very much is a priority. It's a question of affordability and ability to raise one's own food, you have control of food supply. The primary point I want to make is that a lot of these concerns can be dealt with by existing ordinances. We have cruelty to animal orders, we have nuisance orders for noise. And instead of banning, instead of banning people trying to raise their own food, we should rely on, we should allow people to do so, and then if there's a major problem with someone having an illegal rooster, well, then deal with that, and it's not like you have to look very far to find a rooster, if you know who has it. With that said, I do want to say that the yearly registration fee seems to be prohibitive. Part of the reason that we are, that we want this ordinance passed is to make food and homegrown eggs affordable. If we have $100 fee every year, and, I mean, do we charge that much to people who are keeping humans as tenants? Let's make it reasonable. I don't see any need for a fee, I don't see any need for a yearly inspection. Again, we have nuisance laws if the causes of problems are creating waste. In terms of some of the specific issues brought up by others, pests are going, if pests were going to come into the village because of food being left out, wouldn't we already see that with people leaving cat food out, people leaving dog food out? Wouldn't we see dog waste, dog feces everywhere and just like, you know, running down the streets? I don't think we see that. So, and that's about it. Very much in favor, would like to see something passed, would like to see any costs minimized and any additional regulations minimized as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Laura Papo, and hi, I'm a chicken application out of a guest. And just to run something you said about the cost, the fee, I'm definitely in favor of allowing chickens in the village. I think some of the parameters you set are very reasonable. I think it's designed to minimize the impact on neighbors by not allowing roosters, by limiting the amount of chickens. I know there's a law that are about having them fenced in appropriately, but the cost being prohibitive, I just want to add that the groups who are affecting most, most strongly by making this fee of $100 every year are middle and low-income families in New Paltz who stand to benefit the most from having, you know, low-cost, affordable, nutritious eggs from their own backyard. I mean, Martha Stewart lives in New Paltz and wants to have six chickens in the village, she has no problem splashing out $100. And a lot, you know, number of people don't have that problem if they want to have these picturesque chickens in the yard, and they are adorable, and they are wonderful pets, and they aren't very noisy, they're very sweet. But anyway, just to sum it up, if you're going, we're affecting our low and lower-income families most when we put that fee on them, and I think that's something maybe we should be considering.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Audrey Littlevich, and I also live in the town. I just want to, I agree with the people that support having chickens. I just want to bring up many good points reviled, and I agree with all of them, just one other aspect, and we just want to bring up, and that's the fact that so many of our children are brought up so detached from the source of food, of where food is grown and where it comes from. They're more, they're more intrigued with dinosaurs that have been extinct for god knows how many millions of years than with animals that are alive now. And I think it would be extremely educational for them to be in closer contact with sources of food, to be, for those people that have chickens and have children, they'll be involved with taking care of them and feeding them, and I think it's, it'd be a real important educational experience for them.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm standing, Tabler. Going back to my past, when I was a little girl growing up in Brooklyn, my grandmother used to take me to Picken Avenue, where the food vendors would have these push carts, and the chickens would be attached by ropes to the legs and wheels of the push carts. So she would buy a chicken, and we would walk home to the apartment. She would, she'd kill the chicken, and then she'd pull the feathers off, and then she would sear the pin feathers off with a flame. Now, the people who have never raised chickens are glorifying about the eggs they get, but do they realize what's involved? Just want to point that out. Not everybody does.
Thank you. So on the left, you haven't had anything to say yet.
Hi.
Sorry?
So I just want to speak briefly about why this issue is so important to so many people in New Paltz. It highlights an important fact that we're coming to realize, and that's where will our food be coming from in the next 50 years? Already we're facing problems of food supplies and food shortages all over the world, and, you know, we've just heard about food prices increasing in the United States because of drought in the Midwest. So it's an issue about sustainability and can build a community that is self-sustaining, and where we're able to have control over our source of food. And prohibiting that requires high burden improvement, I think Brian Obak mentioned that, and I don't know that that burden improvement has been met in the arguments against this law. And we've seen in the town of New Paltz trying to enact- And we've seen in the town of New Paltz trying to enact similar ordinance. In the town board's wisdom, they are looking to you, the village trustees, for guidance. So I hope that you will take that to heart and that you'll enact an ordinance that benefits the greatest number of people possible in New Paltz and that the town board can then take and adopt as a law in the town. And I also want to highlight that the cost of raising chickens is not fifteen dollars a week. I live in a home in New Paltz that raises chickens. We currently have chickens there. Many people in the town of New Paltz have chickens against zoning. Many farms in the town of New Paltz have chickens against zoning.
Yeah, throw them all under the bus.
Well, it's important that we recognize it's already happening.
Yes.
It's already happening and we need to create laws that reflect reality. Raising chickens costs less than twenty dollars a month, providing feed. For a dozen chickens, it's very cheap and affordable. And I also want to point out that the cost of licensing fee is prohibitive. A hundred dollars is far too great. I know that I was here when that kind of went from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars and I think it should be held at fifty, the same cost that it takes to inspect an apartment every year. That shouldn't be more than that. So thank you for taking this issue and I'd love to hear more comments.
I know you guys have been very, very patient, but if, okay, Ara, you have to speak on this.
No.
I do, for those who don't know what I'm saying, anyone who hasn't spoken yet, we'll get to you first and we'll have a few kind of second round, maybe rebuttal questions, but not let this go on all night.
The only thing I wanted to repeat is what I said before. Nobody knows how the Board of Assessment Review is going to handle the chicken situation. And if somebody wants to save two dollars on a dozen eggs over the course of a month, I don't want to have to pay for it because their neighbor got a tax deduction of fifteen thousand because now from residential area, they're now dealing with chickens. This is, you know, somebody wants to save two dollars, that's fine. I don't want to pay it. Why should I as a resident who had, bought a house, a nice house or whatever, live in a residential area, now I have to deal with chickens or the output of chickens or whatever the result is in chickens? Don't know how the Board of Assessment Review is going to handle it, I would hope, I mean, I've spoken to Lori and she hasn't really made a decision. And it may not be a major problem in the village, but it starts in the village and it goes to the town. And the fact that people are breaking the law who are doing the chickens, this is a disservice to the people already, and that's all I have to say.
What would happen if it became appealing?
It became what?
What if your assessment was up if your neighbor had chickens?
My assessment was up.
Would it, is your support for the law dependent on whether it raises or lowers your assessment?
No, the assessments don't get raised. Assessments, the Board of Assessment Reviews functions to reduce assessments if you have proper.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about what Lori was doing.
No, 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 no. Because I asked her, I said, what do you do, not so much here, but the average chicken lays twenty eggs a month. Forget the ones that don't lay and they're going to kill them. Yeah, I don't even go into that, but that's a lot of eggs. There are going to be seventy eggs. That's a business of his fault. This is, you know, this is a residential area, it's not a commercial area. I think, you know, whatever you charge for the fee, you should be charging to make up for the people that, you know, they're going to have to have their taxes raised, assuming that's what the Board of Assessment Review would do. They're going to have to have their taxes lowered. Somebody's going to have to have, you know, their taxes raised. So that's all I have to say. I just don't want to pay for it.
Thank you, Ara.
Can I just make a point?
Well, is there, yeah. Anyone who hasn't said anything yet? No? Yeah, please, Mara.
Okay, since I am the person who basically brought this forward, I mean, you know, everybody had a hand in this and Jason and I had conversations prior to it, but I want to say a couple things, address a few of the issues. One is that this was first written about in the papers maybe in March. We've been talking about it, it's been on almost every board meeting agenda for the last two, three months, so much so that Sally was fed up with talking about it. It is very true. So I think that there has been ample, ample time for the community to come and speak about it, and I actually wanted that to be the case because I wanted to have everybody's input. I didn't want people to be surprised by this law. I wanted people to be able to come and give us their input and their ideas about how we can make this better for everybody. And, you know, and I'm going to speak to your, in terms of the cost being prohibitive, I, oh God, it like kills me to think that that is the case. But I think that because of the compromises that have been made to make this something that the entire board is comfortable with, at least for this first year, this is how we're going to keep it. And Stuart and I discussed, and I think we've actually talked about this at a board meeting, at the end of this fiscal year, we will review with the building department how things went, if there were, you know, three people keeping chicken in the village or if there are twenty-five people keeping chickens in the village, and how that all went down. And at that point, we will either, you know, leave the law as is, improve it, maybe even revoke it if this is a disaster. I'm open to these things, but I didn't put it forth because I think it's going to be a disaster. Put this forth because I think that this is going to be a good thing for our community and to address the abandonment issue. I'm somebody that cares about animals and I don't want to see animals being abandoned. And that is part of why the people who apply for the chicken license are property owners. So if you are a tenant and you want to have chickens, you have to get your landlord to agree. And Tova is a perfect example of a landlord who might be able to allow chickens on her property because I can't imagine a landlord who doesn't live there allowing chickens to, allowing their tenants to keep chickens. So it would be at a property where it's a owner occupied rental. And to be very honest, I don't even plan on keeping chickens. This is much more about food sovereignty and having a local source of food and looking at the global scale food system as something that can be easily disrupted. And this is a way that we can protect ourselves and relocalize our community. And this is just a step towards that kind of mindset. And I think that New Paltz is really, really ready for that kind of thing. Look at all of our local farms that already exist. So this is a step in that kind of direction towards local food gardens at people's houses as well as being able to keep chickens and have eggs. And to address the commercial part of it, you're not allowed to use this commercially, you cannot barter, trade, any of that for commercial purposes. So it is not going to be a business for anybody. And I think I've addressed all the things that everybody said that I have in here. So I hope that all of you who have not read the law, maybe you want to take a look at it.
Did you have something you want to say before we give people a second chance?
I just wanted to segue into what Ariana said. We could have a discussion about responsible people and irresponsible people. And, you know, there are irresponsible dog owners, there are irresponsible pet owners, there are irresponsible landlords, there are irresponsible property owners, you know. I believe that what Ariana has proposed and been refined by discussion, and she's right, I think we have talked about this long. So it's a question of responsibility and irresponsibility, and I think there are enough caveats in the proposed law that irresponsible people are not going to be able to deal with this. The one thing that no one has brought up, which I think is very important, I mean, some people may not, but I do, lawn disease is a very serious issue in the Hudson Valley. And the only natural deterrent, okay, to deer ticks are chickens. So I am willing to, and Mr. Muller, I'm sorry you disagree with me, but it's true.
No, I just wanted to say it's guinea hens that.
All chickens eat deer ticks. Guinea hens are better at it, but all chickens like them. And I think that is worth thinking about as you think about all of the issues that are being discussed, but I think it really comes down to whether people are responsible or irresponsible, and there's no way you can legislate that. I think that the law does propose and gives caveats that make it restrictive enough that you are going to have to be a responsible person. I happen to have chickens when I was young, okay? And I know if you take care of them properly, they are as wonderful as any animal that you might think about having, okay? If you neglect them, you're going to have problems. So I do support your Ariana.
Thank you, Sally.
One thing, I ran the numbers based on twenty dollars a month and broke the hundred dollars down by month. Works out to somewhere around six twenty-seven per week. And, yeah, and I mean, that's if twenty dollars will feed, you said, twelve chickens or something like that.
Yeah, over it does.
Okay, so I mean, for six chickens, you might have to reduce the cost down a little bit more, so six twenty-seven is based on the, well, yeah, that's just what I, that's what I ran for, so, yeah. Just put that in there.
I'm sorry, one sec, like, what do you mean, one second? Oh, sorry, do I have to?
Yeah, I just wanted to toss that.
Any other board comments, Stuart? I mean, you don't have to, they have lots to say still. Yes, you've been very patient for a second.
Yeah, I have quite a few points to bring up. If we're talking about as property owners and there's a limit to how many chickens you have, chickens only lay eggs for a certain amount of time, for a certain amount of time. Once they stop laying eggs, what are you going to do with that property? Are you, what are you going to do with your chickens? They have, you could eat them, but here's the thing too, someone said, oh, well agricultural, the agricultural movement is cruel to animals. I'm not going to dispute that. However, if you put chickens in the hands of people who don't know how to slaughter properly, how is that not cruel? People who have no experience slaughtering, people who have no experience dealing with animals or doing husbandry, how is that not cruel? You're going to put it in the hands of students who have no experience with this? I am a student. Are you going to, you know, you're going to put the hands into someone's like, oh, this is a great deal, oh wait, but now I have to kill the chicken, what do I do with it? That becomes cruel as well. If you're going to tell costs, there's the food cost, which already brings it up to more than five dollars a week, which someone said you can't afford for eggs, and then there's vet cost. Are you going to not bring your pet, your chicken to the vet if it gets sick? And then, I mean, who's, are most people going to adopt six pets? And why not? Because they can't afford to adopt six pets. But these are things that you have to take care of. So already this is more than a carton of eggs. I am a vegetarian, I don't eat meat, I do support the right to have chickens on an appropriate lot of land. When you're on top of people, when you're in a village, it's not appropriate. There's smells, there's to speak to neighbors, there's sounds. I don't want to wake up to chickens crowing every day. And no, you're not supposed to have roosters, but they find their way in there. They do. That's, we have documents that support that roosters find their way in there. So I don't want to be disturbed by that. And then I also hope that when this is voted on by the board, that personal agendas are not in the mix and if so, people can't separate what's best for the village from their own personal desires, then I hope that that vote can be recused or voted upon fairly.
Just as a point, people aren't slaughtering their own chickens, they're actually not allowed to.
But, okay, but even then, if you're not slaughtering your own chickens and you bring it to you slaughtered, do you not have to pay for that as well? I mean, the costs just keep going up and up and it's more than a carton of eggs at this point.
I would like to directly respond to some of the points that this woman had brought up. I think in addition to educating the children, which is a very important, even project right now about the way food is being produced and connection with nature, there's another element here in this project which is strengthening communal life in one way or another. You will talk to your neighbors before you bring the chicken in. That's what I did first in four months before I went to the town with proposal. This is what neighborly relationships are about. And you talk about it to them, you listen, you listen, and you talk. As far as slaughtering, as far as diseases, I grew up with chicken, but that was a long time ago and that was in another country, so some things have changed. However, I haven't seen with my pets too many chicken owners coming to the vets in gardeners or in New Paltz with sick chicken. That is not a common practice. What is happening is you talk to your local farmers, you ask them for advice, you communicate with your local farmer about different issues related to disease, animals, related to slaughtering, related to other issues that may arise up. This is also contributing to community relationship, to educating each other, to celebrating together this process of food production and animal husbandry. So I don't think any responsible owner of chicken will look for a student to slaughter their animals. We love our animals. We don't respect a chicken for any, for any weird reasons other than working animals to produce food. So I don't understand very well the issues that were brought here, at least the sentiment that fits this.
Thank you, Tova. I know there's a couple other people who want to speak, but let me just ask one question before we go on. I'm pretty confident that we've heard a lot of detail from the two rough sides of the issue and I'm pretty confident the board has got the jizz. Though I'd hate to miss a point that you think really might sway our opinion. So if you've got something you think has been said before or has not been said in a clear enough way that maybe you thought we might not get it well, please share that with us, but if it's a matter of, this is a fascinating debate that could go on for hours and I hope it doesn't. So trying to constrain the conversation and see what we have to say. So I guess Alan and I'm sorry, twice is I think enough for, so Alan and Ann and then, is that, anyone other than Alan and Ann?
I have two questions.
Okay, sure. And Vicki, well, sorry, no, 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 no. If you've spoken twice.
Alan hasn't spoken.
You know, this is for people who, now the second time around, so Alan and Ann have not spoken twice. And who's not spoken twice or has not spoken at all?
Alan hasn't spoken.
Well, no, I know, those are the two, okay.
Actually, that was.
All right, well, let's see where we're at here. Alan first, then Ann, and please do remember that a lot of points have already been made.
Thank you. I actually am not responding directly to whether we should or shouldn't have chickens. I am responding to something that Sally said, and I would like to in effect take compliment to the board. I think that.
Then take all the time you need.
There are two things, issues that go on in the village that aren't, as somebody said, enforced. And I listened to this and I listened to the work that you folks have put into this and the compromises and so on and so forth. And it sounds to me like maybe this is the start for things being enforced, because it sounds to me like it's the intention of the boards that this law be enforced, that it be reviewed. And so what I'm asking is, if you go ahead and ask this, that you take this tentative approach with some of the other things that are already on the books that need to be enforced.
As we are, thank you.
I know, and I, that's, I'm motivated by that. I mean, the start of the codes is toward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ann?
Well, okay, two things. First, it sounds as though this is going to pass, okay? Without really hearing Tova's input. I mean, Ariana, when you spoke, you said, well, when this passes, blah, blah, blah. Okay, number one, so, you know, I don't know how your, how much the public input is affecting your decision here, it's already been made clearly. The other thing is that, oh. Oh, yeah, when people talked about having chickens and they're already having chickens here and there's not a law permitting chickens, I don't know what area that's in, but I know that in Pinellas County where we called to find out what the issues were, you know, they had passed law allowing it, they said that there were odor complaints and sanitation complaints, that's what the main complaints were, that passed. There was somebody there who said, well, she's had chickens for a long time, but they said, okay, now you have to stop. So, I mean, why wasn't there any enforcement of this?
That's a fairly easy one to answer quickly. One is to. One is, is, to my knowledge, there aren't chickens in the village boundaries, so there's no lack of-
Someone said you-
In, in, they said in New Paltz in general, and, and some, the borders are unclear to, to most people. So, um, Plains Road, for example, the village ends right after Soderland Park. So, but, since there's no visual distinction, you may not know which boundary you're on necessarily. Um, but in the town, you know, I don't, since it's not village, we can't really speak to their enforcement, though I would imagine that the few places that were chickens, when you keep in mind that the village is two square miles and dense, the town is about thirty-seven square miles, so there's lots of places where just, people may not know it's against the law, and, and the building inspector may not know that someone has chickens. Um, if you're not out patrolling every road and every property in the town. But, other than that, you have to ask the town, um, co-enforcement officer.
Is there currently a law on books against chickens in the town? Or is it just not specified?
In the village, I think it's, you can't keep them.
Right.
I don't know about the town.
I just have a question, who, who is going to be responsible for overseeing?
The building inspector. It'd be, basically, be, a chicken coop would be an accessory structure. That'd have to meet all the setback requirements, like the same if you'd, if you're building a, a barn or a shed. It'd have to have the same kind of, you know, inspection, to have these clean and sanitary.
And so if there was, if, if a neighbor complained about another neighbor, it would be to the building office?
To the, as the same with the other code violations. Like if someone's grass is, you know, four feet high, or if their house is peeling paint, you know, code violations, it gets called into the building inspector and they go out and check.
Very busy man, or woman?
Woman. Uh, yes, and then, all right, Vicki, and then maybe we're out of?
And Brian.
We, we give so much, so much emphasis to um supporting our local businesses, and that includes our farmers, includes the farmers who raise eggs, who raise uh free-range chickens. And yet, if we have people here who are, have their own chickens, and perhaps each chicken raises, uh, lays twenty eggs a month, and that becomes a great number of eggs. And after a period of time, the chickens outperform themselves, and they're no longer layers, and they're slaughtered by the owners, aren't we affecting our local businesses? And has any consideration been given to that?
I actually had not really thought about it from that perspective before, but I think that the people who um are going to be raising chickens are really not going to be that many, that it's going to seriously affect the businesses, the local farmers. I think that a lot, i-if anything, I think that this will be something that encourages more people to want local eggs, and would increase the whole, the overall picture of local food in our community. I could be wrong.
Vicki, and then Myra, and then Myra's last point.
At public hearings, there really shouldn't be dialogue back and forth, but since there is, I wanna ask what the planner's position is on this issue.
I don't recall, actually. What Kurt's position?
We, we didn't get Kurt's position on it, we got Kathy's input. Cause it was kind of, most of it was done before he was even in place, Kathy had given us her input, which is where a lot of the regulations came from, actually.
And, and I appreciate the comment about the um wealth of opportunities to learn about where food come from that already exists in our community. And um, I also think that if people are raising these animals for their own use, and they can't self-rebarred them, that some of them are gonna be overwhelmed at some time, but...
Then give it to them then.
I'm sorry, Toby. Uh, Myra, and then unless, that's it, unless someone has not spoken yet. Please, Myra.
Maybe you've already considered this, but as a, in addition to the one on developing a recipe, could it be a prerequisite, or needs to be a prerequisite to have, to point out if the person initiating line two tends is aware enough to you, the board, the community, and actually the overall, in care from beginning to end, you know, I mean, like a driver's license, I can't just sort of drive a car, so I just wanna know about that.
Uh, like a, like a test for a chicken license?
No, not like that. It's out of consideration that the person applying and paying you a hundred dollars also knows how to take care of it.
Well, all, all of the regulations that um the building inspector needs to see that are met before the license is granted would really take care of that.
So, the building inspector's going to have that overview of chicken law, thank you.
And she does, very much so.
Okay.
She has to, and does.
Unless there's any last desperately needed comments? No? Then I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
So, move.
All second? Thank you all, uh, so would we like, the first question before we move on, would you like to hold this hearing open, or, or, oh, wait, just close it for a little bit? Jumped the gun.
We need to open our meeting.
Open the meeting now. All right. Will you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, we have two, at, at least for the agenda, uh, the two resolutions that we have in front of us. Um, the, do we wanna take action on the chicken law tonight? Or was there enough comment that we wanted to hold off? Okay, so three then, the two resolutions and the chicken law. And I guess we might as well just talk it from here again. All right.
I see, I have a question, if you're still on the agenda. I had asked the um clerk to put the inter-municipal agreement about channel twenty-three on the agenda, and I don't see that.
We didn't get it until very recently, I believe.
Maybe cause they sent the wrong one?
There was a change, oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't get an email about that, there was a change needed on the town's end. I mean, we're waiting on a revised copy.
Of course, they've, they've approved it, but we don't have the one that they approved yet.
There's, there's some language change, Susan emailed me.
All right, so when we get that-
It's September twelfth, is, that should be on.
Okay, is it, the other thing is, I see on the agenda, there's a request that the clerk go to Nikon. I had asked that that be put on the agenda, so that if we wanted to approve any or all of the board members to go to Nikon, it'll be approved tonight because it starts before the next meeting, so... Maybe that's what's meant, I mean, it's, looks like it's just for the clerk.
Well, there is a training for the clerk, and I think she's requesting for herself.
I understand that, and I think that's super special, because there's two things on the, on the election on that, but there's also a lot of things that the, that perhaps other board members would like to go to, and would have to be addressed tonight if we're gonna approve it.
Anything else about the agenda? All right, yeah.
I think-
Well, this is not for that yet, yeah, um... Yes, well, hold on, like, give me a second to make sure we've covered everything before we move anything. Uh, so two resolutions, chicken.
Yep.
And that adjustment, make sure the trustees are included in the Nikon. All right. So, I'll move to accept the agenda?
Selecting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Erin, you first up for public comment?
Yeah, just a friendly request, uh, uh, maybe I missed it, since most people are here, or everyone's here, most people, the chicken law, you guys could discuss that.
It's first, yeah.
It is first, I, that's what I wanted to say a while. Cause you talked about it.
Slow down for a minute. Uh, any other public com- non-chicken-related public comment? KT, and then, uh, Don, and Ira, and Peter.
Um, KT's open, um, Phil dressed in, non-chicken commenter. I have two topics that I wanted to um make comment on tonight. One was, uh, first, on the one twenty-fifth, I wanna thank the board for their hard work and enthusiasm towards the one twenty-fifth, and that it was a huge success. Um, really, I'm really appreciative as a member of the committee and the village, that the whole board was behind it, and um was even there, and I thought that was really awesome.
Thank you.
Um, I did wanna bring back one of the issues that we dealt with along the way, and that was the issue of um the fair not having a traffic plan when in session. Um, it became clear in our deliberations and collaboration, collaborative discussions with the DOT that while the Duchess County Fair, the Arts and Craft Fair, out at our own fairgrounds have full detailed traffic plans, when those events are on, there isn't one for the Ulster County Fair. So, I would request that the village board petition the fair to work with you guys so that we can have a traffic plan. If we had a traffic plan and we were diverting people off Main Street to begin with, we wouldn't have gotten to that big hubbub, what did I just say, hubbub, uh, over closing Main Street. Um, and that was a big revelation, and I would ask you, as moving forward, you know, thinking about next year to put together and really push that to happen. Clearly, with the seventy-plus sponsors and business owners in the village signing on to closing Main Street, signing on to having this event, they will not mind if we divert all the traffic congestion that occurs during fairtime. The second topic I wanted to um comment on is the middle school. Um, a few years back, I don't remember how many, there was a big save the middle school petition, which basically just said, please keep the middle school where it is. And at that time, every member of the town board, every member of the village board, signed that petition in support of keeping the middle school where it was. I hope you still feel that sentiment. Um, I know that a proposal to renovate the middle school um went down, but I don't think that means we need to give up our only community walkable school. I hope that if you had a chance to sign that petition today, to keep the middle school where it is, that you would do that, and I hope you move forward in the discussions about taking over the middle school and having it as another use, you would be advocates for keeping the school in the village. Um, there's a variety of reasons, economic, social, community, um, environmental, educational. Um, clearly for me, and I've already told the school board this, that, you know, before campus configuration was working, we're one of the highest-ranked schools in the state, if not, school districts in the state, if not in the country. It works, maybe we can't do what we wanted to do because of these austere times, but I really think we need to keep the middle school where it is, and I hope that you will join that cause. His fall logic and reason points to that discussion. I think also if you look at public opinion, you look at the voting record on school issues, clearly, um, the public wants to keep our four schools where they are, including the middle school where it is. So, um, as I said before, there's so many issues of import facing the village. Um, I would implore you to not waste times, uh, so much time supporting a plan, which has been proposed by the town, and um I do hope again, as they are seeking your wisdom on chickens, they will seek your wisdom on this issue. And um, don't spend too much time and attention um on a plan to remove our only community walkable school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a response as a favor?
We've all been invited, and the school board has been invited to the town.
I'm not on the board.
I know, that's why I'm gonna tell you this.
I am, but I, yeah, I'm pretty excited.
We are all invited to a meeting tomorrow night at town hall, and one of the items is this exact company.
What, what time is that meeting?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, cause yeah, that's what I, when you said night, that's why I thought it was in the afternoon.
I thought it was four thirty, but it's in the mix.
I think it's seven thirty.
It's a regular town board meeting, it just happens.
Oh, figures, oh, okay, okay.
Duchess is-
It's on the agenda.
And the school board's been invited, we've been invited.
Sure. Um, I just wanted to say that I wasn't hundred percent um behind the one twenty-fifth or certain aspects of it, even though the New Paltz Times reported that I was. But-
Sorry, I'm attracting my gratitude.
Okay, thank you for attracting me. But, I do wanna say that, that I was there, and that it was a very good event, and it was a beautiful community thing, and, you know, everything, despite all the bumps in the road, a lot of hard work, got it through, and so, you know, yeah.
And will board some of their faults next?
Well, true.
Yeah, we learned a lot of lessons, learned a lot of lessons.
Maybe about a hundred and twenty-nine fourth day. Uh, I believe Don, I think, was next.
Way back in the quarter, so if you don't mind, uh, please.
Please join us.
And, uh, you know, when, when you all got elected, you're so diverse, I was really curious how you all gonna work together, and uh, it's a pleasure to see you work together inside, we respect each other, and may other boards intend emulate that behavior.
That's three towns in one night, it must be. I don't think we've had a meeting in a while. If y'all are bored of the, the normal public access tradition, actually, even our meetings is a bit-
Oh, and Bob Thaden, uh, emailed me from work, passed me from home, he says the meeting looks and sounds good from home this week, so hopefully that's good, I hear everyone's home.
Good deal.
Um, here as an individual, but I wanted to speak about uh my work on the consolidation subcommittee for human resources, and where I think that committee is gonna go, or possibly gonna go, and how it affects things in the short term. Uh, and the bottom line is, at the end of this, I'm gonna advocate for a hiring freeze for permanent positions, permanent hires in the village between now and consolidation vote. So, let me, let me tell you how I get there. Um, and I think this, this, this issue has the, the possibility to affect financially a generation of, of New Paltz residents and taxpayers. It's like really a big deal to me. Um, the consolidation subcommittee on human resources is co-chaired by Ryan and Kevin Barry. I'm on it, uh, Amy of Lou Barry Cohen is on it, and Ross Pollak's on it.
And Randall.
Oh, and Randall Levert, yeah, I had that good saying, that was really good. Uh, one of the things we've been looking at, and we're gonna make a recommendation, I believe, is the benefits offered to our municipal employees. And we've been looking at the benefit packages, and, and um, we have found them in some cases to be from another era, when healthcare was cheap. And um, the benefits that we offer our municipal employees, they made sense in the past. I mean, one bargaining unit gets a full family health coverage with no contribution for the entire time of their employment and until retirement, which, which was affordable in the nineteen sixties and seventies or eighties when some of these people were hired. It's not affordable now, it's just not affordable now. Um, so let me also quickly say to municipal employees in New Paltz, what you have now is a sacred bond. It was what you, you planned your kids' colleges on, you planned mortgages on, what you've planned your life on, that, that's, that's, that can't, can't be touched, in my opinion. Uh, but I think we need to have a new tier, a new tier of benefits for, for future hires. And I think since you have a consolidation question in front of the, the community, and you have a human resources subcommittee which is looking at this very issue, if there are permanent hires made before the consolidation question is settled, or before we even give our report, we've become product plants. And our, and our, you know, the work we're, we're trying to do is, becomes irrelevant. And I, I, um, I think that if there are needs to be met, you know, I'm not suggesting that the documents don't serve their functions, but I think two twenty-hour a week part-timers, theoretically, theoretically, can do the work of a, of a full-time employee for the next six months, or a contract employee. So, I, I just, um, I believe, and if I had my, my way in the, in, in the discussions, I believe we will be, as a subcommittee, recommending a new set of benefits across the board for the town and the village. Um, and I, I believe if, if, if any recommendation that we were to make were precluded by any permanent hires in the next, you know, six months or until consolidation is settled, it really takes the air out of what we're doing. And uh, since, you know, I, I just thought it was an urgent issue, and I'm not speaking for the subcommittee, but I did discuss with the subcommittee that I was coming here, and, and nobody said it was a bad idea.
That one was in paper.
No, I just, I didn't wanna thank you for that. So, it's, it's something that-
Is someone, or are you going to make the same request from the town?
Um, we have been, um, we have been told it's not an urgent issue for us to address at the town over the next meeting or two, but we certainly will be making that, the, the town representative is, is very aware of that. One of our, uh, one of our subcommittee members-
Quite a few resignations.
One of our subcommittee members is a member of the police commission, so, so these issues were discussed.
That's how it originally came about.
Yeah, cause I mean, we don't plan any resignations that I know of.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I ad hocally heard that there might be some, some openings to fill, I don't know.
There will, one, one will be open in the fall.
So, I just, you know, just wanna throw this out there.
Let me ask something this, Don, have, have you guys had a chance to speak with other of the town or village attorneys about, procedurally, is it relevant, is this, is a hiring freeze relevant, given that these benefits packages are not dictated at employees with the part of the contract negotiations, and you, you know, are-
I don't got the board.
Yeah, because we can't, you know, it's not a one-way street, you know, so, so we can't commit to something until after negotiation, so I'm wondering how that, I'm wondering how that time, how the contract negotiation time freeze, because I don't, we just have one bargaining unit, I don't know if the town does, several. So, I, I've given a stack of schedules and what's, I'm just not sure.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a big deal, and I'm, I'm sorry to dump it on you here, uh, but that's why you get the big bucks and stuff. Uh, but it is a, you know, it is a, um, it's a, it's a concern. And, and, you know, the, the, just to show, on, on top of the healthcare thing, uh, the same bargaining unit I was citing as an example, uh, they quickly go to four weeks of paid vacation. They have Columbus Day, President's Day, and Washington's Birthday. Uh, you know, Veterans Day, the day after Christmas, the day after, it's, it's, it's just, it's from another time. And it, and it made sense then, and I say in full respect to the people who work for the village and town, you earned that, and, and it made sense when you were hired, but it doesn't make sense going forward, we can't, we can't do it.
One, one thing to keep in mind in deliberations too, one reason I've heard for, I, I don't know the numbers, I don't have a math note, it's true, this is off the top of my head, but, um... I, I don't know the numbers, I don't have a math note, it's true, this is off the top of my head, but, given the, the, the skills of a lot of, some of the, the people who go to work for municipal governments, one of the trade-offs to making less than you would in the private sector at the same job is the benefits, and that's why people stay.
Yep.
And that, and that goes from the, the administrative staff down to the public works who could, you know, making sixty, eighty bucks an hour as a plumber or a treasurer is, you know, is pretty nice, but...
Well, we're late for the benefits, no contribution.
So which, you know, there's a line, we've got to figure out the appropriate.
And I think, I think that was part, part of our deliberations and how we got to there was the fact that the healthcare costs keep rising, we, we almost said that it'd be better to give more salary as, as would the private sector, but, you know, take, take some of that. But I think this is all.
Yeah, I'm, I'm self-employed, my wife has a job with the benefits, so, you know, most families are like that, it's, it's, you know...
And I totally lost track of that, I'm sorry, I forgot our slump of a comment, so we get into details. But thank you so much, Don, for bringing this up. And it won't be an issue before us for another month or two, so we have some time to consider it. I think Peter had a comment, yes, and then Ira.
I, I saw on the, on the attendance today, you also talked about fracking, and of course, I'm totally opposed to fracking. And I would also like to point out to the board that there's a bill pending in the state legislature sponsored by Senator Tonya Bellon, I forget the assembly sponsor right now, which will outlaw fracking and of sentence in the state of New York. I'd like to see the board pass a memorializing resolution supporting that amendment, or that law, it's government opinion.
If you'd like to provide us with one, I'm sure we consider it.
I'll give you the name, I'll send you the number and the sponsors.
Thank you. Ira?
Yes, I'm glad you got your compliments.
Bring it on.
I, I just wanted to bring the boys again, so you have no handicap access.
Oh, the lift is broken, isn't it? Well, we discovered it tonight that it was not working.
I brought it to their attention already earlier.
Yeah, all right, well, I didn't know, I just went to use it.
Thanks, we, yeah, we just found out.
We have a service contract to renew, so.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? You can, I mean, sorry, I, I didn't, were you going to say something? No other public comment? Okay, great. Any announcements from the board?
Yes. This Sunday at 1:00 PM in Peace Park is the Defeat the War on Women Rally. Women everywhere and men who love women and support women and equal rights should be there. I am going to be speaking, and I hope that all of you will join me, and at this event. Oh, and there's two other announcements. These are more like for your information type of things. The campus has a volunteer fair on September eleventh. The Career Resource Center is who to contact if you'd like to have a table there. The village is planning on being at these kinds of things. There's also a club fair on September thirteenth, eleven AM to two PM. I don't actually know where that one is, but, but so if anybody is, you know, interested in gaining students, volunteers, and getting more students from the campus involved, and whatever community things you're working on, I would call the Student Activities and Union Services Office for the club fair, and talk to Mike Patterson.
Stuart. On Monday, the twenty-seventh, next week, at seven thirty here, will be the first meeting of the revolving loan committee. On Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, at seven PM here, will be the consolidation study public outreach committee. And if there are people who are not yet on that committee who would like to be, they can send a letter to the clerk, or call me, or even come that night and we'll get it addressed. So as many people as we can get involved, the better. The only requirement is to, to be a member, that you be interested, and that you help us do the work. Thanks.
Thanks, Stuart. Any other announcements? All right, and the first up is the chicken law. Ariana, would you like to make some kind of motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion, I don't actually know how to do this. I'd like to make a motion to...
Adopt the law.
Adopt the law, allowing the keeping of chickens on residential lots.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
I, I have, I listened to all the comments, and I'm, I'm kind of divided on the whole thing, but in my mind, I'm looking at this as, as an experiment. I think we have to be open-minded about issues such as local food. And while this wouldn't have been something that I, I would have come up with, I think I could support it as long as we track how it works. And I've heard from trustee Bosco that at the end of the first year, or maybe the first several years, will be reports from the building inspectors, how this is working, is it costing us money? Is it causing us problems? Is it, is it a wonderful thing, or what? The one, the only comment, I thought all the comments were good, but the one that concerned me is the one about SECR, I don't know if there's anything, if there was a comment made, perhaps because of the environmental issues here, that there should be a SECR finding, and I don't know if our council has to advise us on that or not. Other than that, with reservations, you know, I'm willing to vote for it.
And I concur with trustee Glenn.
Well, that makes two, two people not sure whether the SECR determination is something that should be of concern. We should talk about that for a second. Why is that a...
Well, I was going to say I would vote after, we've been hearing it several times on the attorney, what we had mentioned that aspect of it to us.
I'm reading the SECR.
You're reading my mind.
So, you know, assuming he saw no difficulty with it, and apparently there's no difficulty.
Well, the point is, to get a determination is, you know, positive, a positive or negative, you know, yes, it has a significant adverse environmental impact, or no. It is probably, I would imagine, on a list of type-two actions for, I believe, most agricultural uses are, but I, I'm just trying to remember that off the top of my head. Because I can't imagine any kind of livestock having adverse environmental impact as defined by SECR, maybe not, as defined by certain scientists or researchers. So I'm comfortable with that, but it's a fantastic question. Only because of the scale, as you said, it's, is, if it's a matter of maximizing the possible, even if it's widely improbable to look at the impact.
The decision should be that it has a negative effect on the environment, but it should be reviewed. Let's see, plus two would say, could still require review, and if it's not clear whether or not it should be reviewed. I'm saying the impact is of such magnitude that there should be a review. Somebody should look at it and run a review and say, it has no significant impact, then you're, you're fine.
I simply just can't recall which types of local laws are subject to it under that provision.
Well, if, if it's an agricultural district, if it's still an agricultural, there's no problem. But if it's a residential cell, and agricultural activity occurs within a residential cell, it's an impact on the environment, and the, and the quantity of the impact, the size of the impact, could be an impact that the area should be consideration of.
Well, this, not having this, we can probably debate five months all night, but not having the authoritative information, that we can't really go much further than that. Sally, was there anything else besides agreeing concurrently with Stuart? Right?
Um, I think, you know, thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I think we have reviewed this several, several times. I mean, I am a bit curious about this SECR, but I don't, I don't really know one way or the other, to be completely honest, but, so, yeah, that would be my only reservation, I'm voting on it right now. But I'm willing to wait either.
Was there, sorry, I sort of offered you the chance to be the first.
No, I, I mean, this, I mean, obviously, environmental impacts are of huge concern to me. You know, as a general rule, that's what I care about, but, so, I mean, I would think that if this was going to be that kind of thing, Joe would have brought that up to us. He saw every version of this.
For months.
From us, yeah.
Okay, so, well, for myself, I agree with everything in the law, except as I said last time, the first provision, which limits it to minimum half-acre lot size, because I much prefer the language prior, which was three chickens for every quarter acre. So you could have, as long as, well, for, for one reason mainly, because we have two restrictions on chicken keeping in the, in the law. One is the lot size, which is the only restriction in this version. Then we also have all the coop provisions, which mean that if you meet all the set packs and all the other requirements, and Sally even mentioned a question last time about, you know, well, I don't know how much room chickens need necessarily. And so I looked it up, and apparently a hand needs about two to three square feet per hand. So you're looking at six square feet for three chickens. And I think there's not many properties in the village that could meet that comfortably with less impact than even household pets. So that, that would have been my preference, having it at half acre, six chickens per half acre with a minimum half-acre lot size, as I said earlier to Peter. The twelve hundred and ninety-something parcels in the village, it restricts it effectively to seventy-seven. Many of those aren't Huguenot Street in a historic district, which may not prohibit it, but would mean that to get a coop, you'd have to go before the Historic Preservation Commission for their approval as well, so that's, maybe not here nor there, just an interesting side note. So I'm, actually, I can't support a law that would only bring a benefit to six percent of the village properties and a significantly lower number of population. Because this is six percent of the parcels, not six percent of the population, and since all these are single-family homes on half-acre or more lots, it's the least likely population to be, for example, multiple people for dwelling. So I just think it, it's a great law, it's a great idea, and, and if it were more uniformly accessible to our constituents, I think I'd support it wholeheartedly.
Let me ask you something, you don't think that adds a good step towards allowing this? This is a good way to see if this is a good idea before we open it up quite, quite that much? And, and I do think of it as restrictive, and I have, I personally do take some issue with that, but I feel like this actually was the original language, and then we changed it, so, and then we changed it back. But, so, so the original language wasn't that we could allow that, and I, I mean, and I really think, you know, if we want to take a look at this and see this as an experimental trial period, which I think that we all do see it that way, you know, while I, I have a belief about it, I think, I still think of it as, as a trial period, since we are going to be revisiting it and looking at it again, you don't think you could support it, you don't think you can compromise and support it with us? And then we can revisit it when we get our report at the end of this fiscal year and see if we want to revise it and open it up further, or, you know, whatever it is we would like to do then?
I see your point, but no, I can't, for two reasons. One is, I don't like the precedent, that if we're not confident that we've written a good enough law, then we shouldn't be passing it at all. We shouldn't have to have trial periods for local laws. I mean, we wouldn't have a zoning law like this that we can, well, maybe allow some development in an area and see how it goes. I mean, it's a matter of, I think, if there's a benefit, then there's a benefit. If it's not, if, if it's, if there's a benefit, it should be expanded to the most.
Do you think I'm not confident about this, though?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all, I mean...
I, I mean, I, I know that's not your thing, but that's, that's not the logic behind it for...
The other half is that if this is going to be an experiment, it's one restricted to, almost by definition, those least likely to have chickens. Maybe not, maybe, because someone has said it's a middle and lower class, working class, and, and by definition, a single-family home, a, a lot of half-acre or more in the village is incredibly expensive. So it's, we're looking at the, the wealthiest segment of the village are the only ones allowed to keep the chickens in a law written to address the needs, as someone has said, mostly of, of producing food for yourselves, which may be irrelevant, I mean, just have, may have nothing to do with economic class at all. But I'm just, I'm just uncomfortable with the small number of people who are allowed to do this and setting it for reasons that have not been made clear, or at least in my mind. I haven't been persuaded that keeping three chickens on a quarter-acre law is, is any less or more harmful than six chickens on a half acre. So without any reasoning behind it, besides just being not sure, I'm just not comfortable. But I think it's, it'll be a wonderful vote and get the dissent.
No, you're not allowed to speak.
I think you have to realize that some of these half-acre lots also are ones that'll have a lot of folks that are living near that is tenants, and if they're really hot on it, and they're working with their landlords, which we hope everyone does, even though it doesn't always work out that way, then the landlord will sign on, and so it's not necessarily all the wealthy people who have an acre that'll be affected by it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Thank you. Congratulations. Yeah, that's, no, it's perfect timing, and we are going to take a five, well, we're three minutes early. But take a five-minute break, we'll reconvene in a few minutes. All right, let's go right on to number two.
I would like to move to table number two, or from next week.
On what grounds?
On the grounds that we did not receive material as directed by the board, it all be that Ariana and Stuart's recommendations regarding fracking be combined from three laws to one by the village attorney. And it hasn't been done, and I have no, no material to deal with.
Do you guys want to talk to that before we go?
Well, I'll just say that it was my understanding that paperwork was to be given by the clerk to the attorney about the, the paperwork that you all received at the last meeting. And when I spoke to him today, just to clarify where he was on that, he said that he didn't have it. So I said to him, well, then at the meeting tonight, I guess what I would do is ask the board members to get their input in on it, and that hopefully by the next meeting, he can have a, a, you know, a proposed law, to see if this proposed law that's in your packet can be adjusted, assuming everyone wants it to be adjusted, so that, you know, we can schedule for public hearing. This is in addition to the law that's already, had been proposed on a different theory. Remember, the first law was based on a theory of civil rights, environmental rights. And the one that's been, is going to be sent to Joe is not on that theory, but it's based on bans under your zoning ordinance, and at least so far in the, the two lower courts, the Supreme Courts of two different counties in New York have approved that type of a statute. So it seems wise to go on that parallel course. The third one, I didn't give to him, which is road preservation. It didn't seem to particularly apply, we certainly could add that at a future time. It gives you a right, if they're using your roads to apply for damages, if they destroy them, but most of the roads that would be used, with very few exceptions, are not our roads. So I don't think that's his higher priority. So the, the law that you have in your packet is the one that I'm suggesting that he look at and put it, get his comments, and putting it into a, a proposed law for next time. But everyone's now had a while to look at that, and we'll have until, I would say, give him a week before the next meeting to get your comments in, assuming you want to go forward with it, which I think everyone does, so that he can have a proposed law to us that perhaps we can schedule a public hearing after looking at it at our next meeting.
Sally, does that meet your concerns? Does that meet your concerns?
Yes.
So do you not want to table it, or do you want to table?
Well, I want to, I want to take the call.
That's, yeah, that's it.
I'm sorry, the other, the bit though of, so we're not going to be dealing with three laws, or one law? We're dealing with several, is that, that was your other concern?
It was my understanding that we did not want to deal with a very good proposed law that we were presented with at the last meeting because of what Ariana and Stuart had learned, and that the direction was that we were going to attempt to put together one law covering all three things. That was my understanding. Now, I may be wrong.
I, I don't think that's exactly what I meant, but I, I, the intent was to consider all three theories.
At the same time, right.
And then perhaps pass two or more laws when we see how it came to our particular municipality. And I, and I'm leaning towards the one that we have on the table, and the one in slightly changed form that you have in your packet. And I didn't think it was a good idea to pass the first one, so we see if it affected the second one. And there's also, you recall, as part of that second one, there's a moratorium on fracking while this all goes forward, so. And it's not only fracking, but mining, you can read the language that's in there, and it's quite extensive.
Rather than table us to a specific meeting then, I think it'd probably make more sense to table it until you guys get everything you need from Joe.
All right, but is, is the board all right with trying to get their comments on that law in?
Well, I'd rather see the, Joe's, any of Joe's revisions before I comment on it, so, because there's things that wouldn't work legally.
Well, it was drafted by lawyers.
Yeah, it's, it, this is, this is a, a model statute that's being suggested by folks who are in the anti-fracking field, and, and who are involved with the cases that have been argued so far. But I, but Joe can put it in language that... But I, but the, Joe can put it in language that applies to our code and maybe have comments on it. But I think that the board has to look at it conceptually and see if there's anything in there that they're opposed to or want to know more about or change. So that, that when we get the final version, we have everybody's input into it.
Okay.
So I'd like, I, I, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but I think it would be prudent to do it as quickly as possible.
What's the deadline like, one week?
Yeah, if everyone could give their comments, uh, in, I guess, to everyone else as well as to Joe in a week, then, uh, if we're not, we're not way out in left field with different opinions, then he can put together a proposed law.
Yeah, if we, if we get our comments to him by next Wednesday, then he'll have a full week to put everything together with our direction.
And if he does not have time to get the law together for us for the first meeting in September, I would like a resolution for a moratorium given to the board first week in September if we need time to work on the law. But a moratorium and a law combination doesn't work. The moratorium isn't, is until we can get the law in place.
And I think you'll, that's what's contemplated by the documents that you have there. I think that's a good idea and that's a moratorium on this particular topic as opposed to the more broad moratorium we've been discussing in other matters.
All right, so keep a look at that by the twelve. Number three, uh, I mean, if we authorize the stated, um, Robyn Wolf Fund account changes?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, four, um, what do we need to do here? I think this is setting a local law.
Well, it's a whole procedure.
Yeah, so I'm trying to figure the motions for the discussion here.
I'm going to need to authorize the director of planning to proceed with the development of and recommendation to the board for a change in, in zoning that would allow, um, B two to have retail whining workers and to follow the steps that he has.
I'll second, I'll second that. Any discussion?
Yeah, one, one point that confused me is we're going through the code to see what changes we're gonna make. How did this one pop up? Why isn't this part of, uh, fifteen, twenty changes that we're gonna make? I, I just didn't know what, where that came from.
Well, first of all, he, we must be, someone must be contemplating the possibilities requesting this. Number two, we have not finished the zoning code and there is no date that I know of to do it. And he's recommending a specific change, which might not have been contemplated because what we're working on are definitions and special use permits, not a change in the zoning code per se.
I think.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, yes.
I can see this being part of the whole package. Uh, you know, I don't particularly think this is.
It's not a change.
The level of priority. Where are our levels of priority?
We're taking, we're working on definitions and special use permits.
Right.
This is a change in actual zoning laws, not a change in definition and it's not a special use permit.
I mean, but we do wanna change all of that stuff too. And, and it seems that, I, I, I mean, I'm not against doing this. I just really feel like, why are, why are we doing this?
Yeah, because as Sally said, there is an applicant that this is gonna affect.
I understand that.
And if I could finish, I could explain the rest of it. Um, there's only.
You cut me off, so I would, I would appreciate, you know, finishing my point first. Um, I find that, you know, we laid out our priorities and this was not part of that. And we don't have a moratorium in front of us, but we have this.
That's a very good point.
Did any of you bring this up with Kurt?
Yes, I did. We had a full conversation about it.
Good.
And.
And, uh, I mean, and he gave me reasons why it ca- it came to pass and he agreed with me that I was right and that this shouldn't be the priority.
Oh, so he, he agreed with you that it wasn't priority?
Well, after I told him that this wasn't one of our priorities, he said, I see your point, basically.
Um, you guys do realize that, um, Kurt is not just working on that list of priorities that.
He's got day-to-day things.
This is, this is a day, part of his day-to-day job that he does during and all throughout that process. Um, we did ask for the zoning code revision, uh, that, we don't even have a schedule for that yet. The reason we don't have the moratorium on the agenda tonight, as I believe, I hope Kurt explained to you, though you didn't explain it here, uh, with the rest of your comments, was that he and Joe had come up at the last minute with reasoning where we might have a shortened process if we do certain things we're looking into.
I mean, what I was told was something completely different about why it wasn't going to be allowed to be on the agenda, but that's a separate issue.
Okay.
And I think that if, if we're having a, a standing meeting with our attorney on Friday morning, anything that needs his review before it could go on in our, our agenda should be allowed to be reviewed and added to our agenda by Friday at noon. Because otherwise we should have a different standing meeting day.
And this couldn't be.
And, and I understand that, but at the moment, that was the reason I was given.
Well, that reason was wrong.
That reason changed the day after.
No, the reason was wrong that you gave. Um, regardless, this is part of the day-to-day work of the planning and building department.
This is.
Sorry?
I'm ready to answer the vote.
Okay. Um, what was your motion again?
Two.
Well, no, no, I'm sorry, is there, is there any other conversation? Cause I, I mean, I could explain why this was put before the planning board of what came up, but not.
I, I know, I know all of that already. I already got my questions answered. I'm making, I'm making a public statement to the rest of the board about why I am not thrilled that this was brought before us at this moment in time with absolutely no direction. Not that I think that, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against this. I just think that we need to look at our priorities more, you know, and adhere to them.
So is it, I understand that a business, a business owner, prospective business person came in?
Came to the office as, as most, as every person does, perceived the business, whether it's construction or new or change of use.
And said.
And said, and brought this to the atten- to attention and I'm not gonna mention who they are. And I mean, what it was like, if they had a session, you can tell, I can explain the situation and you can let me know whether I should say publicly or privately or not. But I'm gonna err on the side of protecting people's business.
Right, please.
So someone came in and we found an oversight in the code and that's what Kurt identified it as, as an oversight. Um, because it just does, the way our code is written just doesn't make sense and this changes a single letter in the code. So it's an easy fix, um, specifically, um, and he did have direction because he reports to me. Um, and when he brought this up, um, it was something simple and easy enough that it was worthwhile bringing to the board because it didn't seem much point in holding off a good change of law for, um, what could be months and months while we review the entire zoning code. And since we also are not quite sure yet at what order we're doing all the things we were talking moratorium for. So by not acting on this, we are putting, um, well, this one particular applicant, then any other future ones, who knows how many or if any will come up, um, to the very, very end of our moratorium process, the very end of our rewrite of everything, um, when it didn't seem like it rose to that level. It didn't seem that controversial, it didn't seem that, you know, unusual a change. It's not like we're, you know, it's not a dramatic change. Sure, in concept, yeah. So that was the thing, yeah, that's how the office works and you're gonna continue to get things that are small projects.
Well, that, that is the point I wanted to make, um, and, you know, again, disrespect, but the planner serves the will of the entire board. You are the direct manager and when there are issues that require that, but that was the purpose of us coming up with that list of priorities.
The priorities did not exclude doing any other work besides those priorities, right?
Uh, I, I disagree with that. I think that the majority of his time should be spent doing that. And just because one business owner comes in and says, hey, I noticed that, that, and I was thinking about opening a liquor store downtown, doesn't necessarily require him to drop things he's supposed to be working on to accommodate that business on. And, and I bet there's tons of things that we could, um, point out that may or may not fit into our zoning that we could change. I mean, I don't know, I, I just think that, you know, we set a specific set of guidelines that we asked him to follow and head toward and now he's doing other work. And, and he's been doing other work in several different circumstances that were outside of those guidelines.
And, and I don't think he's the one to, he's not the one at fault with all of that.
No, he was directed to do something.
Yeah, no, I tell him these things all the time. It's my job.
It's not your job.
It's not your job.
It's not your job. That's the thing, it's not your job.
Hell, yes.
When I agreed to take the, our, our concerns and create a list of priorities and when we had that conversation, the comment was made by the mayor, that these are the overall priorities, but do not negate the day-to-day operation. He said that. Two, I'd like to point out that none of us would be very pleased if something came before the ZBA which required his review and recommendation on a variance or something else.
Yes.
And said, oh gee whiz, it's okay that you didn't advise them correctly because we expect you to work on priorities. So I mean, I took the priorities to me that I want him working on these, but not to the exclusion of the things that really day-to-day have to be done in that office.
Or the direction of the mayor.
Or the direction of mayor. Well, if somebody, if, if the chair of the planning board, the chair of the ZBA came to the mayor and said, I haven't gotten a recommendation and it hasn't been reviewed, are you saying he shouldn't direct him to do that?
Um, I would say that those things are specifically outlined in the purview of the planner. Reviewing, reviewing matters before the planning and zoning board. I would say that.
Right, but what if he didn't, what if an issue came up?
I would say, I would say if a person is not acting within their job description.
But who's the one to go with that?
That would be, that would be the mayor's position. If, if blue, if, for, I'm not even gonna make a specific example. A person who is operating under a specific, you know, if the clerk is not clerking or the DPW is not DPW-ing, then, then that's, that's the mayor's job to say, no, you're here to DPW, go DPW. But I think there's a specific.
There's a level of direction, together, yeah.
There's certain outlines and then, you know, whatever.
There's, there's oversight and accountability and then there's direction.
Right, and, and I think maybe we've gone too far into this as it is or whatever, just, you know.
Would you have an overall view that you? Okay, we, we agree
What?
That the planner is supposed to do day-to-day things.
Okay.
Plus our priorities, right?
Right. Right.
We agree on that.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other problem then?
They believe I don't have the authority to direct the planner to do anything.
That's what I'm really saying.
No, not anything, not anything, just certain things. I think, I think there are specific things that you should be directing and then maybe not some.
Okay, I, I think I'm missing a point.
So am I, actually.
If it's worthy, we can discuss it in executive session, but I don't think it's germane to, to what's before us.
I agree.
Okay.
So it's only germane, I suppose, in how it affects people's voting on whether we want to move forward with this zoning change.
And it's been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. I think that's about all the discussion we need, um, unless someone has something burning to say. Um.
No, I think we've all burned our bridges.
Hmm, apparently. All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Let's see. Um, I'll move to, uh, I'm sorry, what is the motion for this? This is the, uh, to make no comment?
I'll move to, we're just receiving and I have no negative.
I'm just trying to think of the phrasing. Is it, cause we're sending no comments. So just no action, is it?
No action. I, I am going to ask for clarification from the police department on some of their definitions.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, is there anyone who objects to taking no action on this? All right, so we'll just, Kelly just more than minutes looped up no action. Um, and I'll move to approve the payment to Merrick Construction.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we on track for the timing of this project? Is it going where it's supposed to?
Yeah, a couple of little, uh, bumps, we got over them.
Oh, is that?
Um, uh, move to approve bills and claims.
Uh, with the exception of the ones we booked.
Sure. Yes, those three.
Do we need it?
No, we don't need to.
Okay. We remove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I move to accept the, uh, board minutes of August eighth. Is there a second?
To approve them.
Wait, there are no notes in my packet.
You had to turn it out.
I assume she's got them separately.
Yeah, yeah, everyone got an email.
I will move to accept with, um, typos corrected. There are many, many typos.
Okay.
Are we accepting them or approving them?
I'm moving to approve, but with the understanding that all of the typos be corrected. I did not find a problem with content.
All right, it's moved, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Um, uh, move, I'll move to, uh, approve the renewal of contract with Handel.
As long as they repair it. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, is this, is this one, because it's all either one of a kind or, or because it's below the threshold we don't have to bid on?
Right.
Yep. So I'm sorry, did we vote on it? No, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, now, uh, how many people wanna go to NICOM or want the option of a NICOM?
I'm not gonna be able to go anymore.
I'm not.
No, Brian?
I wanna go to Syracuse.
It's, it's a, it's still a possibility, can we?
So one and then.
I, I don't know if I can, but.
Why don't we approve?
What are the dates again?
Uh, September eleventh.
Eleventh, yeah, but that's those are the dates that we have to table on campus. Come on, Stuart.
It's in, like, west.
All right, then I'll move, uh, I'll move to, uh, approve the clerk and deputy clerk to go. Um, I don't know if they will, but let's get the approvals.
I would just like to move the approval of the village clerk.
I think what they were doing was, uh, they were thinking of going up one, one each for one day, so it might be the same.
Well, I, I think probably the, the clerk should go, but two of the sessions, which I don't believe run the same day, are, uh, election. And there's vital records, there's, there's a lot of things, so this is a new clerk.
Yep.
Unless there's some reason why she can't go, this is the one I think.
Yeah, I agree.
So do we wanna send both of the new, our new clerks or just one?
One clerk.
Just send the D clerk.
The whole point of deputy clerk is to cover when clerk is answered.
All right, so I'll move to approve the clerk to go to NICOM. Is it second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we have two resolutions that were on the table this evening. Uh, I'm sorry, we got the, the Robyn Wolf Fund account, that was, uh, so only one resolution.
Yeah, good.
I just have the Robyn Wolf Fund that we already approved.
And.
I know, this is one. One, yeah, we did this one.
I'm moving to approve the resolution to appoint the village attorney as council.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And chicken law, two items, is that it?
I think so, exactly.
No more executive session? I move to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Oh, yes.
Aye.
Aye, thank you all.
Aye.
Aye.